Really posted the order and go to item one, discussions for city of our budget for fiscal year 2019.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. At the last workshop, we talked about going through the Senate Bill Two, potential impact on our budgets moving forward. So Sethe has prepared a presentation, I think you all have a copy of it. It is a one that's under reading, it's titled Senate Bill Two. And so he's gonna run through it, try to show you comparison, these are strictly comparisons, right? These are all relevant numbers, but, and then he'll be able to answer any questions you have regarding the tax rate. And then I have a second presentation on the budget itself, and there are changes.
Thank you, Dan. Senate Bill Two, the Texas Taxpayer Transparency Act, goes up to the top of the session. The bill goes to effective January 2020 for the 2021 budget. Essentially, the bill caps the revenue growth at three and a half percent, also known as the rollback rate. Any tax rate adopted above the rollback rate when the bill goes into effect next year will trigger an automatic election. In the past, it would only be residents who have sufficient in the election if we went over the rollback rate. There's a significant amount of variables that go into the calculation of the revenue growth, sales tax, credit values, new developments, etc., going into the calculation. So in 1990, the City of Harlingen residents elected to use the 0.5% of the sales tax or 25% to sales tax revenue for property tax relief. Sales tax revenue is included in the property tax rate calculation and contributes over 6 million in property tax relief for the city of Harlingen residents. So essentially, the way I would summarize Senate Bill Two is reduces the ability, reduces the city's ability to be financially flexible and responsive to its residents. And what I mean by that is, here's a sample, and these are all estimated numbers and not, they're based on historical trends from the prior five years. And what I want to show was a comparison between the 8% rollback moving forward versus a 3.5% rollback moving forward. And so essentially, what the new law does, it has reduced the amount of rollback by about 3 cents annually. And so, 3 cents and dollars is about a million dollars. So if there was a need to go to the rollback at an 8% cap, and the city had the need to do that, they would be able to generate a million dollars more and respond to certain needs, where the city has had certain needs and we need to raise up that tax. And with the new law, now we can only go to that 3.5%, which then locks us in, we lose about a million dollars of flexibility that we could have gone with 8%. So we, I took a look at our expenditures to kind of compare revenues and expenditures and include a scenario for y'all. Historically, our expenditures have grown an average 3% over the last five years, so forecasting now forward, I use that 3% growth, which averages about 1.3, 1.4 million of expenditure growth per year. And so contributions to that growth includes, over a 10-year period, public safety has grown about 3.2% over the last 10 years. We've seen the cost of health insurance, commercial insurance liability, and all other insurances grow, go up on an average of 6% over the past 10 years. And we've seen the cost of vehicles increase by about 50% over the past 10 years. So we still had an 8% cap. What I did on this slide is compare our expenditure increases of about 1.3, 1.4 million per year versus the additional revenue we would generate going to a rollback rate. Now, over a five-year period, we're still short about 4.3 million, which would be have to be made up from other sources of revenues. With a 3.5% cap, looking at the same scenario, we would be short 5.7 million. And so overall, we're less financially flexible by about 1.4 million with this 3.5% cap. And so that concludes my presentation, I can answer any questions.
And if you just, these numbers, 8%, if we had to go to the 8%, right? At any given year, there's just a comparison of going to the, to the math on 8% compared to what it would be at the 3.5%. That's all it is. Not saying that we would go to the 8% every year, I'm just saying, if we had to go to the 8% every year, in comparison.
What are the consequences of not doing it this coming year? Or is there an option of not doing that this budget cycle and not for election, or?
I don't understand the question. Was there an option of, or you would absolutely have to go back with?
The 3.5% extends to January 2020, and that's long. That becomes effective. So this budget cycle is the last budget cycle that we could use the 8% rollback. After this, it's the 3.5%. And that's not the rollback, it's referred to as a no new revenue cap.
That's the answer, that, Commissioner, what happens if your maintenance operation rate is lower this year, the 3.5% next year is gonna be based on that lower rate, so if you go up to a higher rate this year, you at least have some flexibility with that cap.
That was my question.
That was, that was my question. So for a city, not Harlingen, but a city who has a rate that's larger than ours, they, they're gonna basically get frozen at that rate, they can only go 3.5%, or is it, or do they get frozen based on their actual valuation calculation?
Well, if, if, if based on the appraisal, there's a calculation at that place, so that number is kind of a moving number, year to year, based on the appraisal value.
Correct.
As they come in, and it's all based on calculations. And then what we expect to, to get in revenue, like, we projected 96.5% collection rate on appraisal.
Correct.
If it was lower, if it was higher, all those things factor into that calculation.
And that was my next question. A lot of this is based on numbers that do fluctuate, so if for some reason, our valuation comes in, let's say it's 6% from one year to the next, some large project comes in, changes the, the face of things, are we stuck at that 3.5%, or does that edge up with that valuation?
So new development does not count towards.
Okay.
In the, in the, in the year that it's under construction. Now, the following year, once it's completed, it does count towards that 3.5% cap. So if, if we had a 6% growth.
Yes.
And the calculation came out, we're, we're well beyond the 3.5% revenue.
Yes.
Then we would have to roll back the tax rate or go to the voters to, for a vote.
Okay.
So in summation, this Senate Bill Two that passed takes away flexible freedom for cities and communities statewide.
To balance, to effectively balance budgets and provide, in our opinion. Of course, that depends on the day and.
Yeah, so it's all, I think it's also important to understand, and I think Sir Joe said this at the beginning, he said, this is a revenue cap, it's not a property tax cap, it's a revenue cap.
Revenue cap.
So it, it's not just property taxes, it's all of, it's sales tax as well, so.
So we have a banner year, I'm sorry.
So, that was what I was gonna say.
If we have a high.
You have a sales tax.
If you have, if you have a big, if you have a big year in sales tax, that counts towards the cap, and then in order to not trigger an election, you'd have to actually low, you'd have to lower your property tax rate.
Go back to that first.
In order to keep it, in order to keep it below the no new tax rate formerly called the rollback rate.
Because in 1990, the voters voted to use 0.5% of the sales tax towards property tax relief. That is now part of the calculation, so you have a banner year in sales tax, that 0.5% now becomes part of that calculation to calculate what the 3.5% is.
And so I, you know, this, this was a, this is a, you know, one size fits all, you know, change it to the, in the statute, but we're not all one size, and Dallas is not as, and, you know, really, this, this legislation was really targeted at the metro, larger metropolitan areas, where they have, they've had, they have big increases in their property valuations, partly because we have so many people moving into the state of Texas, and it drives the price real estate up. You can't buy a house in Austin, I mean, it's just so prohibitive. Same thing in Houston and Dallas, they have the same comment. So people in the metropolitan areas where their home valuations are very high are really sensitive to this issue of property tax increases. Here, we have, we're so heavily dependent upon sales tax, unlike the metro areas, this really boxes us in, in a way that, you know, is, is really a disparate treatment. But anyway, that's what, this is what, you know, when they say, be, be scared when the legislature's in session in Austin, this is what they mean.
And Sethe, this is not a tiered system, this is for every city, no matter what size they are, whether they're home rule or.
Yeah, we tried to get them to consider bracketing, in fact, you know, and when we had a different speaker, when we had a different speaker, he was, he was, understood that, that maybe we ought to get bracketed, in other words, either smaller cities or cities on the border should be in a different tier or different, get a different treatment. But legislation this year did not want to consider any of that bracketing or separation.
So we also asked, the mayor and I also went back to Austin and asked if they would exclude cities, those cities that were using sales tax and property tax relief from the calculation. And it went pretty far, got a little bit of traction, but it fell off at the end, and it, they didn't take it out.
Representative Lucio was very supportive of that concept, of trying to get, you know, carve out a, because that would have, if we didn't, if we didn't, or not, didn't have to count that, that would have given us, that would have, that would have helped us. And so, sort of got a little bit of being punished for having adopted this, set aside from our sales tax a number of years ago, and at any rate, that's, that's, that's a good explanation for, of Senate Bill Number Two. Thank you.
Okay, Sethe, I'm ready for you. So now, now we're going through the budget presentation, Sethe's gonna pull it up. I'm not gonna go back to the five-year history, we've covered that, unless you all have questions on that, I'm just gonna go straight into the budget proposal for next year. So this is where next year's budget proposal, we are, again, 1.4 minutes per street. On public safety, we are proposing to purchase one administrative vehicle, two criminal investigation vehicles, and six patrol units for police. On the fireside, we're gonna do 12 air packs, 25 sets of bunker gear. The intent here is to buy 75, geez, right? I think I said that last time. And we're doing 25 a year for the next three years, that way they have two sets of bunker gear. And then some unit for fire. We're also wanting to replace some AC controls over EOC in bucket traffic signal maintenance, even more work for parks, a fence around Victor Pole, and then increase the allocation to the main site, which I think is a very good idea. What we're getting back, what the main site is doing, is the animal shelter, football we're paying, I think is a problem. But salary increases for fire, anthologies, also non-civil service at 2% across the board, effective October 1st. So this is what it would look like, 75, expected fund balance at the end of the year, 45-1, revenues 46 million, 46.5 million expenditures, about 1.3 million of short. If we use fund balance and take it out of fund balance, it would leave it with about 127 days of operation. We're not proposing to take it out of fund balance, just, kind of for your information. So at the first workshop, we talked about a deficit of 1.9, and we have now the appraisal tax rolls, we have some additional revenue now, 134,000 dollars, additional revenue from the appraisal. We are also proposing to use 600,000 from the debt service fund balance. So how does that work? We're basically using debt service fund balance to cover a portion of our debt, so which pushes more money into M&amp;O, maintenance operations, okay? Now, this is not a consistent source of revenue, that's built up over time. We project collections at 96.5%. If we get a 97% collection year, 98%, that extra money goes into fund balance, right? And over time, it builds up, so we can use it to do these type of things, and we are proposing to use 600,000, okay? You know, we've had some inclement weather that has created some issues. We do propose to put a city hall generator for this building, or for the Monty Hill building, one or the other, that costs 320,000 dollars. Monty Hill building repairs, and then we have that e-draught, I think I said that right, chief, e-draught set for another one of the fire trucks at 32 grand. And I know Commissioner Odebe brought up the merits for non-civil service, so we put those in there, and the gentlemen can decide if they'll stay in there, 83,000 dollars, that is a maximum of additional 2% based on performance for non-civil service employees. So the bank will be from 0 to 2%, depending on their performance. And so as you see the number down in the bottom. This is the, hard to read, I think you have it in your packet, it breaks down all the capital expenditures. I will say, on the street sweeper, that did not change, we are taking money from the grid revenue fund balance to find one street sweeper. We need two, we'll work on getting the second one next year. So how did, how did we get here? Departmental request with 54.4, I don't believe that's changed, it's the same amount. My proposal's 46.5, that has changed, and so the difference, that we cut out of the budget to get to that 0.7, 0.9 million dollars. And this is by department, so you see, cut out 1.7 from public buildings, 1.6, there's a breakdown. I won't go into detail, we talked about it a long time. Some of the things we want funded, I'm not gonna go into too detail, but you see some of the police cars, they wanted some additional patrol units, some fire equipment. We, we are proposing to fund the e-draught, which was in here before and was not funded, now we're trying to fund it. Again, some other items, 12.2, one of the things that you all see in here is the second street sweeper, I, we actually didn't include it in the budget, because I said we're only gonna do one at a time. So, and these are some of the things on public buildings, that, and I agree, I do believe that some of these things we can undertake with the public building maintenance budget, not the big ticket items, but some of the small items, as a possibility. So we'll work on that, again, just an extension of public buildings. Again, we have no legal depreciation or replacement costs in the budget for general fund departments, okay? This is how that breaks down, if I'm going to, Sethe, I'll start. Okay. So this is how it breaks down, 71% of our general fund budget is personnel cost, financing incentives, 4% capital rally, 3%, 18% for services and charges, and supply and support. Out of that breakdown, on the personnel cost, 69% for Lisa Fire, and 31% is all of the general fund departments. That's pretty consistent. The expenditure comparison with last year, 2019, propose for next year to decrease to 741,000 dollars, and that's because of the 1.5 allocation for the airline shift. On the revenue side, we are proposing sales tax, 1% increase in the property tax, we already talked about that, and these are the other fees that we get, we get to the 45-1. And you see the breakdown here, sales tax is 41%. So sales tax, as of last year, has always taken property tax as the largest source of revenue for general fund. And you see it here, again, 1%, I talked about Senate Bill Number Two, so 1% on that. Here's a 1,034,000 dollar increase, and again, that's the 600,000 one time from the debt service fund balance, and the 434,000 dollars additional revenue from the appraisal. Any questions on that? I know it's a lot. So what we're, what I am proposing is to round the budget, the budget I just went through right now, both the gentleman, is we're gonna propose a tax rate of 6.63, even, which would get us the 1.3 million of shortfall and cover the shortfall that we just talked about. Now, that 1.3 does not include the 7.9 million that we had cut out of Austin. These are just some of the items I just covered that we do wanna fund. So we're proposing a 6.63, last time we talked about a 6.64, so we were able to bring that down to 6.63. Tax increase, some of the things that we refund with that, we do have three for fire increases, salary increases, we do have that e-draught set for the fire department, which I really think they need. The emergency generator for city hall or Monty Hill, one or the other, whenever we lose power in those buildings, we still have citizens coming in for services, and the buildings will go off again.
I have a question, how, I mean, so we don't currently have a generator that is located?
We have a very old generator here, and it's manual, and it only powers a thing light, right? I mean, some lights, so it doesn't run the building or the AC or?
Is this something similar to what Water Works put in, City Lake, though, they, in the diesel driven?
So it's similar to the one that we, we installed, but it wouldn't be that big, but similar to the one we installed at the EOC, put that unit, run that building, I think a seven day, straight, on one fuel.
One thing.
And running the entire building, and you need to run the entire building, because that's the EOC. So what happens here is we lose power, some of the public buildings need to kind of start this thing, and then it runs with some light.
And, and, and was it like a really big problem this past year, or?
So it's been a problem in the past, and we've lost power, not just during inclement weather, but we've just lost power. And the Monty Hill building, I will tell you that during Dolly, they were without power for, it'll be seven days, eight days, so we had citizens still going over there trying to get stuff done, more help, and we were guiding them to other buildings. And so it really helps to have a backup generator, and we have a plan in place to put one in Monty Hill, and we've been going after grants, it's actually, a generator for Monty Hill is actually in our hazard mitigation action plan, that's been approved by the state, and the reason we did that, I think that years ago, the reason we did that, because when grants are available, we wanna pursue grant opportunities to fund that, and we, and we will. But this money will allow us to do one or the other. And I say that, I haven't talked about it yet about the Monty Hill, but I really do think that that may be the building we wanna put it at, because it has more department personnel, yeah, and more citizens go over there. Yes, sir.
So we have the solar grid at Monty Hill.
Yes, sir.
So how much is that generating on a good day of total use?
About 30, about 30% of the power.
About 30% of the power, so we could just barely flip on the lights.
And if you can't run the ACs, and that building gets pretty hot, there's not, there's not any windows, it gets pretty hot. So that's what that 1.3 would cover, here we had the 63. So where does that put us? We actually jumped one, so we were right here at 588, so we would just bump one up, one quarter of the way. The golf course, just touching the golf course really quick, so that fund balance is expected to grow to about 970,000. I know we're gonna be having meetings with the committee, we're gonna try to come up with a recommendation, a present to the city commission, so we'll talk about that, I'm sure, and I won't go into the museum, all those budgets were covered. So on the enterprise funds, which is auditorium, landfill, you can see the revenue is expected at 10.9, expenditure is 12.4, and so that's the usual fund balance. 1.2, the landfill fund balance will be used. Special revenue funds, that's tennis court, motel, motel, bridge, we are proposing again to take 256,000 dollars from the bridge fund to fund a, a street sweeper, but we still, we will still end up with a projected 618,000 dollars in that fund balance. So the other fund balances total about 5.2 on special revenue. Internal, this is the warehouse, vehicle replacement, health insurance, you can see the revenues and the expenditures, and the use of fund, fund balance. Now, this money that we're using from the vehicle replacement, that's what that money's for, that's typically used for sanitation equipment, doesn't want to have been contributing to that fund, so that's exactly what it's supposed to be doing. So the proposed budget for next year, 76.3 million in revenue, 77.7 million in expenditures, 1.4 of the fund balances, and so on general fund, 45.1, revenues 46.5 in expenditures, and the 1.3 we covered already from different fund balances. If we use the 63 cent tax rate, that fund balance will remain to 8.5 million dollars. It's showing a 6-1, if we take the 1.3, and we're not recommending that. And that is the presentation. And so what we have, Elvia wants to talk about setting a special meeting next week, we start considering the process for the public meetings, the public hearings on the tax rate. You gentlemen, have any questions, tell me what you're comfortable with the proposed budget. If we have any changes, we can certainly make changes and then have another workshop, that's fine too. But at some point, we will have to have special meetings, because the timeline.
The purpose of the special meeting, if you will recall from previous years, is when we talk about a desired tax rate, setting the tax rate is just a desire to give us some idea of which direction to go. Once we have that special meeting, it starts the other, the calendar, because we'll have to have the hearings, and that'll give us ample time to have those on, at a regular meeting, instead of having to have a special meeting, and it'll also give us enough time to adopt the budget and the tax rate in September at the regular meetings. So that's what we try to work with by setting it next week, if it's possible, it'll be next Wednesday. And it, it's a short meeting, it's just to talk about the desired tax rate, and it could be at noon.
Before it necessary, we will have another budget workshop. Y'all, y'all aren't saying anything. Y'all, y'all need to provide me some input, tell me what you wanna see, y'all make changes, we'll, we'll go through it. I know it's a lot to process, and then considering what happens next year, and that impact, we don't really know, we'll know when we know. We're projecting a lot of things here, but they're all projections. And sales tax may, may come in really strongly next year, and, you know, things will be different. 0.5% goes towards this, but we still get the benefit of the increased sales tax. Well, actually, no, because it's 3.5% cap, right? So, ladies and gentlemen, want us to look at, reduce, change? Vaya, vayante. Are you guys open to a special meeting next weekend?
Whatever you hear.
Everybody? Hey, Mr., you're staring at me, so you have a question? You sure? It's okay to ask her.
The budget looks good, I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, I'll just remind, you know, I, I think this is, I think this is good, I think this is a good proposal. I, I remind everybody that, you know, when you, when you get your tax bills, only about 21 or 22% of it is for.
City.
City. And over half of that is for public safety.
Yeah.
I mean, we really don't, you know, we're, we're not the big burden when it comes to tax.
Pretty mean.
Public tax.
Pretty mean. And on an, I don't know if you saw the slides, but the expected increase is what, 47 dollars a year?
41.
41 dollars is for the year. For the year.
The year.
Month, for the year.
Now, next week on Tuesday, we'll be publishing the effective tax rate calculation, so that one, you don't need to give an actual review all, but it'll be published in the paper.
Okay, so when do you all want to, when do you all want to do, when do you all want to have the...
The 24th. The 24th, Wednesday, the 24th.
At 5:30?
We could do it at noon.
5:30.
Last year, we had it at noon, that's why I brought it up. It's a short meeting.
It's a short meeting.
Yeah, it's a short meeting.
Noon, everybody's okay with noon?
Okay.
The 24th.
Short meetings, noon is good.
Yeah. And then when we get to the point where we present the actual, the budget, or it'll just be a summary of what I just covered, I'm not going to go into the detail. That's all we have, other than lunch.
All right, very good, then I guess, once anybody has any other questions, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.
And we'll be back next Wednesday.